Good evening. We're excited to resume the second part of our board meeting tonight, our annual recognition of the merit, National Merit Scholar semifinalist and esteemed teacher. So Superintendent Anderson, I will turn the program over to you and Ms. Iverson.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. My name is Chase Anderson. I'm the superintendent for Wayzata Public Schools, and it's my honor to welcome all of you here tonight. We're so happy that you're here. I think I can speak for all of the board that this might very well be their favorite night or among their favorite nights as school board members when we get to recognize our National Merit semifinalists. It's an incredible accomplishment. It's always so wonderful to hear from all the kids about their stories and things that they recall and remember from their school days, and to recognize their teachers is just really a special touch tonight. So I'd like to thank all of you for being here, congratulate our students for your incredible work. I don't know how you do the things that you do. You're just amazing. And to parents and other relatives and special guests that are here, thank you for being here with us this evening and celebrating this wonderful accomplishment. And congratulations to our teachers. As I scan the crowd here, I see folks that have, that are still here teaching and working with us, those who have retired, those who have moved on to other districts in different positions and in different communities. But regardless of your current role, and maybe even some that are here from other districts that our students had in grades before they came to join us here as well. But regardless, congratulations. It's one of the finest honors, I think, you could ever hope to have as a teacher is to be recognized by a recent or former student that you made a huge impact on to help them achieve at this level. So congratulations. It's wonderful to be here. I'm going to turn it over to, not right now, but in a minute, to Sue Iverson, our Vision 21 teacher in a moment. But I wanted to share just a little bit of background about what this all means. And probably the large majority of the folks in attendance here tonight are well-versed on the criteria and how all of this happens. But for those who may not be quite as familiar with it, and for those that may view this on a delayed broadcast, I just wanted to share a little bit about the National Merit Program before I turn it over to Sue. So I'll share the following. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, a test which serves as an initial screen of approximately 1.6 million entrants each year. And by meeting published program entry and participation requirements, the students' responses to items on the PSAT test answer sheet that are specific to the program entry determine whether the individual meets the requirements to participate in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Of these 1.6 million entrants, about 50,000 with the highest selection index scores, which includes critical reading plus mathematics plus writing skill scores, qualify for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. In September, these high scores are notified through their schools that they have qualified as either a commended scholar or student or semifinalist. In early September, about 16,000 students, or approximately one-third of these 50,000 highest scorers, are notified that they have qualified as semifinalists. To ensure that academically talented young people from all parts of the United States are included in this talent pool, semifinalists are designated on a state representational basis. They are the highest-scoring entrants in each state's. This program provides scholarship application materials to semifinalists through their high schools. And to be considered for the National Merit Program, semifinalists must advance to finalist standing in the competition by meeting high academic standards and all other requirements explained in the information that's provided to each semifinalist. Wayzata High School is very proud to have seventeen seniors who have been selected as 2016-17 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. We're very proud of all of you and your accomplishments and for your excellence shown in the coursework and in this national academic testing. As usual, you've made us very proud, and you just continue to excel in ways that seem almost unimaginable to those of us who never were National Merit semifinalists. But that's another story. But wow, is it ever an honor to be here in the midst of seventeen of them, of these students from across the nation that achieved at this level and who have done this incredible accomplishment. We're here tonight to celebrate that and all of your great successes and to have you recognize teachers that you've identified that had a significant impact on helping you to pave this journey for you as you've moved forward and done well, not only on this test, but in everything you've done up to this point. You're positioned so beautifully for so many more great accomplishments and so much more success in your future. And I use this only as a springboard into all those great things that await you. So given that, I'm going to, at this time, ask Sue, you can come up now, to come forward, and she'll explain a little bit of the protocol on how we'll do this, and then we'll get started. So Sue, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for all being here tonight. My name is Sue Iverson, and I am the gifted and talented coordinator at the high school. What I will be doing is calling the students up one at a time, and the students will come up, and then I will have the students invite their teachers to come up and join them here as well. And then the students give a little talk about why they picked the teachers that they did to honor this evening. And in doing so, it really lets the community see what was so important to these kids as they were moving through high school. And I think you learn a lot more about the students rather than having me list up their biography of things that they accomplished in their time in school. And so with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. And so we are going to start with Kristen Bush.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Kristen Bush, and I nominated Mrs. Pearson and Mr. Larson. I read a lot of fantasy books as a kid. And looking back to fourth grade, I remember seeing my teacher, Mrs. Pearson, as an Amazon princess warrior. To me, the resemblance was clear, as she was tall, strong, beautiful, and everything I wanted to be as a young girl. I remember learning the basics of geography, math, and English from her. To be honest, before fourth grade, I never really liked learning, but something changed in me after watching Mrs. Pearson. I wanted to be like her, kind, confident, and in my mind, seemingly all-knowing. I began to push myself more and more in school, and Mrs. Pearson was always encouraging me. Even if I forgot a basic part of my math solution or spelled a simple word wrong, she was always patient. I'm the kind of student that comes to understanding things very slowly. My way of learning is to ask many questions, some of which, especially back in fourth grade, could be considered silly. However, Mrs. Pearson never discouraged me or my questions. She would also constantly let me run to the library to check out more books, to the point where my desk was overflowing and I had bookmarks lodged in different chapters of each. In fourth grade, I flourished and fell in love with learning, and I can attribute that love to Mrs. Pearson, because when you have a teacher who sees the best in students, it brings out the best. Thank you, Mrs. Pearson, for all you've done for me and all of your students. When I stepped into my sixth-grade English class, I immediately thought I had Robin Williams from Dead Poets Society as my teacher. It wasn't just that Mr. Larson greeted my arbleary-eyed faces with a hearty Carpe Diem. Instead, it was how much he cared about what he was teaching and how much he cared about us. Writing is hard, very, very hard, both to learn and to teach. It's much easier to press Delete or not even try than to struggle through endless drafts and rewrites. It's easy to be discouraged if others don't see the value in your writing. In sixth grade, I didn't think I was a writer. I thought such a title was reserved for acclaimed authors like Austin or Hemingway, and I was neither of those. But Mr. Larson's endless support inspired confidence in me. One of the poems he taught my class entitled "Stick to Your Task Until It Sticks to You" taught me to never stop working hard to become better. I remember walking through the hallways on my way to the library when Mr. Larson first greeted me with the nickname Billy Shakespeare. I felt empowered by my belief in him and consequently my newfound belief in myself. I remember thinking that if my teacher thought I was good at writing, then why couldn't I be? And so, as my confidence grew, so did my risk-taking in my writing and consequently everything in my life. On the last day of school, Mr. Larson gifted me a worn yellow pocket dictionary that had been his. I usually have it sitting on my bedroom bookshelf, but today, I wanted to bring it here as a testimony to Mr. Larson and the impacts he's made as a teacher. On the inside, he wrote to me, "Keep writing." And thanks to you, Mr. Larson, I will.
I would like to invite up Mr. Lutz and Mr. Johnston. So when it came time to select teachers for this honor, there were many teachers I could have selected from. I had many several teachers that all had a great impact on me, but I decided to choose those that had a real impact on my transition, both to and from high school. So first, Mr. Lutz. I first met him in my seventh grade in his social studies class. Throughout the year, we learned about US history, and especially, we spent a lot of time on the Great Depression and the several programs FDR sent into effect. But coming into high school, I was debating whether or not to take AP US History. And it turns out that I inevitably made the decision to take that class purely because of my interest back in seventh grade. After seventh grade, my relationship with him did not end there. After our Vision 21 coordinator then, Mrs. Tankey retired, Mr. Lutz actually came on during, in my eighth grade, to become the new Vision 21 coordinator at Central Middle School. Through that, we had another year full of grade times. Through that, we had a lot of guidance, and especially through the new iPad program here at Wayzata. We worked together to create educational iPad videos on like, on certain things that students could do in preparation for the coming year. And now for Mr. Johnston. I met Mr. Johnston in my ninth-grade honors communications class. Now, when I came to the high school, I wasn't entirely sure what I was going to do. There were lots of new faces from the other two middle schools that I had not met. There are many, it's a large school, several thousands of students that I had very, very little interaction with before. But coming into Mr. Johnston's class, I always felt excited, because he always told the greatest stories. Now, his was a class that I always looked forward to, more than my science class and my math class. But especially during that time, it's really hard to explain, but the time that we spent together and my, and our continued relationships both after that class, even though I'm very sorry I could not have taken your American Lit class. And yes, that's about it.
Today, I would like to honor Mrs. Frally and Mrs. Kotke. When I was asked to choose a teacher from elementary or middle school, I wasn't quite sure who to choose, but I knew I wanted to choose a teacher who had made a significant impact on me, had influenced me so profoundly that it had an effect even today. When I thought about who that person could be, the one name that stood out was Mrs. Frally. I'm proud to say now that band is the biggest part of my life. For junior and senior year, I have had band every day. I take music lessons, and I practice a lot, even if it's not always as much as I should. But back in sixth grade, this was not the case. I chose the clarinet as my instrument on a whim, just because it was the only instrument I could get a sound out of. And I was not too enthusiastic about being a band geek. And I did not plan on continuing with band past the required sixth through eighth grade. But Mrs. Frally changed my attitude and my path all for the better. When I first started playing in sixth grade, I was just as bad as every other player around me. But with Mrs. Frally's careful instruction and practice, we moved from only being able to make an ear-splitting squeak to actually being able to play some notes. She was patient with us as we stumbled over fingerings, but she demanded excellence in every playing test. I realize now how much effort she must have expended in order to change a group of clueless sixth graders into an actual ensemble, because it couldn't have been easy. And despite that large group of students who couldn't tell the difference between forte and piano, she managed to make an impact on each of us individually. The massive progression in our quality of music from sixth grade to eighth grade is a testament to how hard Mrs. Frally worked with us. But eighth grade is when Mrs. Frally really changed my life. She encouraged me to attend the eighth-grade honor band, where I met the top band students from the other middle schools and learned what a great band ensemble could be like and what I might experience in high school band. She even dared to give me a solo on the song Jungle Dance at one of our concerts. I remember the nervousness I felt before playing on my own in front of the entire audience, but the satisfaction I felt afterwards changed my perspective. I realized that maybe band was something I could enjoy and be excited about and something I wanted to continue to progress in. So I did take band in ninth grade. And now, as I look back on my encounters with Mrs. Frally as drum major of the marching band, first chair clarinet in wind ensemble, and a tried-and-true band geek, I'm infinitely grateful for the dedication and care she put into a sixth-grade band. It has meant the world to me. Thank you, Mrs. Frally. To this day, AP Literature with Mrs. Kotke is the best class I have ever taken. I have not had a class where I have laughed as much and learned as much. Our class had a great many traditions that I will remember and cherish forever. We brought in breakfast every Friday to ease the pain of walking up to the fourth floor at 7:30 in the morning. When we had time, we played the most intense games of charades that I have ever experienced. I know that the fact that one of the most challenging courses I have ever taken could be this fun is completely due to Mrs. Kotke. Mrs. Kotke didn't just want us to understand the material and do well on tests, she wanted us to gain an appreciation for the literature we read and its meaning. As I saw her deep enthusiasm for the books and poems we read, I enjoyed them myself. A teacher who is that invested in the material is hard to find, and Mrs. Kotke blew every other teacher out of the water with her devotion to the material. And she was not only devoted to the material, but also dedicated to each and every student. Mrs. Kotke worked with me personally to edit my papers again and again until I was completely able to express what I was trying to say. She also reserved time to help me express myself. As one of two juniors in a class consisting of seniors, I was slightly intimidated by my fellow students. I was afraid to voice my opinion, because what if I was wrong? Mrs. Kotke helped me escape this fear. She wrote encouraging notes on my journal entries and prompted me to speak my opinion on the poems we analyzed. Over time, my fears lessened, and I learned to share my thoughts with the class. Because of her dedication, the class became a welcoming and fun environment that I looked forward to each day. AP Lit is the only class that I would retake in a heartbeat. The memories and knowledge I gained in that class will stay with me forever. Mrs. Kotke, thank you for devoting time to my academic journey and inspiring me to see meaning in all things.
Hi, everyone. I'm Cara, and I would like to invite Mrs. Ferrins, who is on an island in New Jersey right now, and Ms. Layden up here. Mrs. Ferrins was my Vision 21 teacher from second through fifth grade at Kimberly Lane. And in second grade, second grade was my first year at Kimberly Lane from Plymouth Creek. And I was not that excited. I was leaving all the school that I knew so well. Kimberly Lane is backwards from Plymouth Creek, so I often went down the wrong hallway. And all of the fun traditions that were at my old school. But Mrs. Ferrins helped me with my transition. I, when I got there, I was really only interested in math. I didn't like reading at all. I didn't want to be in reading Vision 21. But she encouraged me to do both. And I remember every day in Vision 21, I would interact with my fellow students, which didn't happen that often in regular class. And I made a ton of friends from Vision 21. Almost all the people that I still hang out with, the friendships were formed in Vision 21 in elementary school. In fifth grade, we, me and my friends often went to Mrs. Ferrins' room, even when she wasn't there, to work on other math that we weren't doing in our regular classes. She even brought in a retired engineer to teach us about woodworking and real-world engineering. And we got to design gas tanks, we built a jet, or we designed a desk and learned how to make diagrams. And we got to tour his woodworking shop. Those are some of my fondest memories from elementary school. And I know none of it would have been possible without Mrs. Ferrins. So even though she couldn't be here, very proud to have her as my teacher. Yay. My second teacher is Ms. Layden. She is a biology teacher at Wayzata, but I've had her as my science bowl coach for four years there. And when I came in, I was a freshman just coming out of eighth-grade science bowl, where I was, you know, like the big fish and like I was good at science bowl. But freshman year, all of the questions were way harder. I was so confused all the time. I didn't even know half of the words they were saying in the questions. But Ms. Layden was very encouraging to everyone, especially the underclassmen and the freshmen. And so I stuck with it through my senior year. And I had AP Bio with her in sophomore year, and she never shied away from my questions of asking why, why things were this way, why we didn't go over this part in the textbook. And always helped nurture my curiosity. And we even did some statistics in AP Bio. With all of our chi-squared tests, I found a passion for math applied to biology and bioinformatics. So I'm happy that I still get to see her every week for science bowl with my fellow students, most of whom were in my Vision 21 class in elementary school. And I hope to continue my relationship with her after, after science bowl is over.
And next, we have Jeffrey Hu.
I would like to invite Mrs. Stone and Ms. Peterson up here. Elementary school was a long time ago, and I don't have that many memories, but most of the things that I have retained over the years have come from Mrs. Stone's second and third-grade classroom. And this is because I remember her for being the nicest and probably the most inspirational elementary school teacher that I've had. And I'm just going to share a few things that, you know, made her stand out to me. The first was that she always had this giant stash of candy in the back of the room. And she would have these really big pixie sticks that everyone would love. And, you know, she would hand those, that candy out to students whenever they finished something that needed to be done, such as a worksheet or problems in a book. And it just made everyone happy. And the second thing was that she always gave out these little certificates. And I have one with me right now. I still have it. And it's for Superior Achievement and Excellence and Performance in Problem Solvers II. And to be honest, I don't even remember what Problem Solvers II is. But at the time, I remember I was exceedingly happy that I received this. And it was just those little things added with her extremely nice and inspirational nature that, you know, it made an eight-year-old boy just feel extremely happy. And it made me feel that my work was actually something of value and that it actually mattered. And that's taught me to work hard, and is a big reason of why I am still here, standing here today. So I thank you for that. Ms. Peterson is the only high school teacher that I've been able to have for all four years of my high school career here at Wayzata. And the reason for that is because I am a participant in debate, and she's our head coach here for the debate program at Wayzata. And debate has just been such a big part of my life in high school. It's taught me a lot of the things that I've needed not only to succeed in classes in high school, but also to be prepared for college. It's taught me how to speak, how to write effectively, and how to analyze various pieces of evidence, and the list goes on and on. I couldn't list all the things that debate has taught me. And Ms. Peterson has been at the forefront of all of that activity, always encouraging me to try harder and be more involved in the activity. And that's helped me to get to where I am today. But it's not only Ms. Peterson's qualities as a teacher and a coach that inspire me, but also her qualities as a person. Ms. Peterson is always someone that I can talk to, not only about debate, strategy, academics, but about things totally unrelated to that. And I feel like that's a lot, that's a relationship that a lot of students that don't develop with their, you know, with their teachers. And it is a reason why she's so special to me. So I want to thank Ms. Peterson not only for being such a great coach and teacher, but also for being a great friend.
Samak Jane.
All right. My name is Samak, and I want to invite up Mrs. Hughes and Mr. Motes. Mrs. Hughes always had a really unique way to deal with my negative characteristics in elementary school. Trust me, I had a lot of them. So everything from fidgeting too much in class, from not being able to sit down at all, to walking around constantly. She used that as not a reason why I was a bad student, but as a reason why I was overly motivated. I could never tie my shoe, even in second grade. And so she made a simple joke about my shoes always flying out in class. And it wasn't enough to put me down or anything, but that day I went home, and the first thing I asked my dad to do was teach me how to tie my shoes. She was one of the most nicest teachers ever, and one of the things that I had a problem with in elementary school was being too frustrated constantly whenever I had a setback in elementary school, a problem that I still deal with today. But Mrs. Hughes had a certain sort of universal kindness and a certain sort of responsibility, curing and responsibility that helped me grapple with it and did not let me stay mad at my small elementary school for too long. Mrs. Hughes was everything you need to be to build a sense of confidence and resilience in grade school. And I'll always be thankful for that, and I'll always be thankful of having you as a teacher. Right. So Mr. Motes and I had a pretty antagonistic relationship that we both enjoyed in our eleventh-grade comp class. I would constantly satirize his impossible paradoxical questions that he gives us that he gave us, and his impossible papers with cryptic and illegible notes that we would receive. And he would do the same to me. He would put down my writing and call me. He would cover my pages with complete notes. He would accuse me of using cliches and inefficient and terrible writing. And it was the best class ever. And it was the best class ever. It was the best class ever. Mrs. Motes, Mr. Motes' class was unique because he let you do almost whatever you want. So for our second-term narrative paper, we had to readapt a narrative paper for our final project. And I threw all the rules out the window and did something completely different. I did a satire expecting me to get a terrible grade and I was going to have to read the whole thing. And instead, what I got back was one of the best grades I'd received for AP Comp ever so far. And that great paper ended up being a paper that I didn't get an A on. But one thing that was really unique about Mr. Motes' class was that it was the only teacher that motivated me to do work not just for the grades. So even after I'd gotten 100% on the paper, he inspired me to keep working on it and expand that paper at almost eight pages, far after I'd gotten an A on it, far after I'd gotten 100% on it. And I turned in one of my favorite works of writing that I've done all year on the last day of school to Mr. Motes. And I talked about it over the summer, too. So AP Comp was a really unique experience with you, Mr. Motes, and I'll always be grateful for it.
Scott McCullo.
So today I have the great honor and pleasure to recognize Ms. McGowan and Ms. Fox. So I'll start with Ms. McGowan. So I knew her in fifth grade as Ms. Glatter. And fifth grade was one of my favorite years of elementary school. One of the most notable projects that stood out, has stood out to me in high school still is the Wax Museum that we hosted. So just a quick overview. Basically, as students, we had to choose a historical figure and we could do research and create a presentation. We put on our own wax museum. So we'd be statue still and dressed up in costume. And then we had explained kind of the significance of these historical figures to visitors. And so at the time, you know, it's just another project. You treat it like any other thing, you get it done. But really, looking back, I realized the importance and true value of the project. Because it really encouraged taking something you're interested in, bringing that into kind of like the classroom. It showed how much fun it can be to learn. Because this was a project that, unlike many other kind of routine assignments, this allowed us to do something that we were truly interested in. And so I chose to be Neil Armstrong. I love space and still do. And that just kind of sparked this passion just for learning more, realizing that there's so much out there that we can learn. And we just got to look for it. And beyond just the simple learning, too, practicing, you know, speaking skills, public presentations, things like that. Plus, it was just fun to dress up, too. So she's had a great impact on my joy for learning. And beyond that, too, just her character was always something for me to look up to. You know, she's a great people person, really easy to connect to, talk to. And to no surprise, I learned today that she's become the principal for the Walker School District, or one of the elementary schools there. And really, that's no surprise to me. You know, just knowing her character and having her in the classroom, I know what a fantastic person and teacher she is. So it really comes as no surprise for me. So thank you so much for all you've done for me and I'm just really happy. I have Mrs. Fox. And so I had the joy of having Ms. Fox, not once, but twice, for 10th-Grade Communications and American Lit. And one thing that was apparent to me immediately was her just joy for teaching. Every day she would come into the classroom smiling, you know, always would tell us stories and have wonderful jokes and things like that. And that was amazing to me because it's something you can't always see in some high school teachers. Every day was a joy. She loved working with the students. She loved teaching the material. And that was just amazing to me. That passion that she had was something that I hope to have for my future career, things like that. And also, just working with kids, that's something that I strive to do possibly in the future. And so just using her as a role model. I just always kept that in the back of my mind. And beyond that, too, she's also a fantastic person. Can't say that about one and not the other, of course. But I mean, it's just amazing the way she can connect with students and just the support she can provide, you know. She's a friend to everyone in the classroom. Everyone feels comfortable, you know. They get support from her with things, you know, in school and out of school. You know, I had her review some of my essays for colleges and things like that. And it's just a fantastic time working with her, a true joy. And I'm thankful, very thankful to have you as a teacher for our high school.
And next we have Drew Mathi.
So today I've chosen to honor Mrs. Drewa and Mrs. Simpson. So first, I'll talk about Mrs. Drewa. I had the privilege of being Mrs. Drewa's student for three fruitful years. Even though during that time I was still extremely young, I still have many, many fond memories from my time in her class. I love drawing the map of our own created university that you had us do. I spent so much time on it, more than my classwork, and I was super proud of it. The logic puzzles and the brain teasers Mrs. Drewa often gave us were super frustrating, but they were so much fun to do. And I still often look back at my packets that I had from those days and reminisce about the fun times in the class. My favorite days, though, were the game days, in which me and my best friend Eric at the time would rush to Mrs. Drewa's class to start a game of chaos or blockus and challenge everybody and hopefully win. Now, I even participated in my first debate in Mrs. Drewa's class, debating that nuclear energy is a net better form of energy than biomass. Now I'm on the varsity debate team, traveling around the country to participate in competitive tournaments. At the time, I loved Mrs. Drewa's class simply because it was so much fun and a welcome escape from mundane classroom worksheets and lectures, which weren't that hard or that interesting. However, now that I reflect back, I realize that Mrs. Drewa had a much bigger impact on me. I developed a genuine learning, a love of learning and knowledge that I've carried with me throughout my middle school and my high school career. The things I most remember, the joy on Mrs. Drewa's face while discussing The Hobbit, the passion with which you described ancient civilizations and medieval architecture. Your love for everything that you taught was contagious and I haven't been able to truly appreciate it until now. I came into Mrs. Drewa's third-grade class as a very shy student, a recent immigrant for only two years, and I exited with a voice and newfound confidence and a genuine passion for everything that school offered. Thank you so much, Mrs. Drewa, and I'll forever be thankful for you and I hope that I've made you proud. So Mrs. Simpson was the middle school Vision 21 director. And she was more of a mentor figure to me rather than a teacher. Because rather than a lot of the content that I learned from her, I mostly remember the guidance that she offered. Now, the newfound voice and confidence I developed in fifth grade might have been a bit of an overcorrection as I entered sixth grade as one of the most obnoxious kids ever. It was like that awkward point in your teenage years when teenagers think it's like cool to be obnoxious in class. So like I was that kid who was always being disruptive. And Mrs. Simpson had to tolerate that for three years. So that in and of itself is something that should be applauded. There's one day that sticks out in particular. So like first I was sitting with my UTM friends, working on math, and I was being pretty disruptive as usual. So then Mrs. Simpson was like, okay, you're done. You're going sitting next to these other people that you don't even know. So hopefully you won't be disruptive. 10 minutes later, I'm talking, being super disruptive. And keep in mind that this is in the media center, when people are supposed to be quiet and they're supposed to be like working, which I wasn't doing. So then Mrs. Drewa was like, okay, that's it. You're going sitting in the corner, back where the lights aren't even turned on. Hopefully, finally, you won't even be disruptive. I don't remember my reaction to that. I probably threw a fit. But even if I did, if it's any consolation, I probably would have done exactly what you did. I'm really glad for your guidance. In any case, Mrs. Simpson's guidance was completely instrumental in my growth. I entered sixth grade as someone who was misguided, not entirely sure about the opportunities that middle school offered, and I had really no idea what I was doing. Mrs. Simpson opened me up to many opportunities, such as Math Counts, Lego League, both of which I did throughout middle school, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And more than that, she always pushed me to do as good as I possibly could. Whenever I got lazy or complacent with any things that were happening, like, okay, I was doing fine in class. I did moderately okay on the CML test. I was like, okay, this is fine. But Mrs. Simpson constantly pushed me to go beyond that and pushed me to really explore the reaches of all my potential. And that instilled into me an intellectual rigor that I'm still super thankful to carry today. You set me on the right path after I entered middle school misguided. And I'm so thankful that everything did.
And next we have Jack Olmanson.
Hi, I'm Jack Olmanson and I'd like to call up Mr. Bodine and Mr. Prodzinski. So I'll start with Mr. Bodine. He was my seventh-grade math teacher in addition to being my middle school math team coach. And so he managed to consistently keep me interested in what was my favorite subject, which I think was my favorite because of him, actually. Because he always challenged me in it, in a subject where, before, I was always getting bored in the classroom. And so he always managed to keep challenging me and making me do more work than some others might have had to do. And so in addition, he has a business background, which for me, I've always wondered, all right, so I'm good at math. What can that get me to? He kind of showed me that there is some sort of path that math can bring me to. And right now, it's kind of making me think of what my future could be. And I'm looking forward to it. So thank you. So next we have Mr. Prodzinski, who, until this point, I don't think I actually ever called Mr. Prodzinski. Well, I always called him Prod. I've known him since, I think, ninth, or summer between eighth and ninth grade because he is the tennis coach at Wayzetta. And so when I signed up for Euro and saw he was my teacher, I kind of knew what I was getting into. He has, or his intensity of teaching is very similar to his coaching intensity. He's blunt, but I appreciate that because he's very straightforward. So I know exactly what I need to do to improve and get better. And also, the part that really sticks with me that he's taught is that school shouldn't be about what grade you're getting or any of that. It should be, how much knowledge are you gaining? What have you learned in the class? And even today, my first day of TA-ing for him, he kept this message going by telling his class basically the same thing of, why do grades even matter? All that matters is that you're thriving, you're learning. And, I mean, if you get a good grade, that's an added bonus and I appreciate that. I really just try to learn my best and hope that I gain knowledge. So thank you, Prod.
Ashmeda Sarma.
Hi, I'm Ashmeda and I would like to invite Mr. Windell. I also am honoring Ms. Cootie, but she has a prior commitment, so she couldn't make it tonight. Okay, so Mr. Windell was my fifth-grade teacher and he gave me one of the most unique learning experiences I've ever had throughout, I think, my entire school career. Just to give an example, when we were in fifth grade, my friends and I, we were doing well on our spelling tests. So then, one day he just decided that we were going to write our own spelling tests. And so he sent us to the library. He let us like pick words out of the dictionary. I remember flipping to the Z's and picking out like the Z words, the log Z words, just to challenge myself. And he had us like look up the etymologies of different words. And through that experience, we like challenged ourselves and gained knowledge in all the, like, in different aspects of vocabulary. And it really like led me to explore, like, what my real potential was. Because it wasn't just we were doing well on spelling tests, good job. Write your own spelling test. And I really felt like that impacted me throughout my high school career to challenge myself beyond what was just taught in school. And he also, overall, he really brought our class together in a collaborative fashion. And he encouraged all of us to collaborate with each other. I remember KL News, when I was in fifth grade, every month, like different classrooms would do different news segments. And we had the last one of the year and he brought all of us together. He had us all work with each other. And I really got to know everyone in the class, not just my friends. And he really brought us together and it was probably one of the best classes I've ever had. So thank you, Mr. Windell. Now I want to honor Ms. Cootie. She was my AP Computer Science teacher last year and my Southern Engineering teacher. And I really appreciate Ms. Cootie because when I first entered her class, I never had a class with her before. And I really didn't know what to expect because it was like my first computer science class. But after the first day, I realized that it was all about like independent work and learning on our own and like see what we could really, to see what we could really learn. Like, I had a few friends in the class and we really enjoyed computers and we really loved technology. So whether we talked about like encryption algorithms or stuff about the web, she wouldn't mind if we were talking off the book or if we were like talking about topics beyond what was just covered in class because she really encouraged us to learn independently and learn as much as we could about technology because it's such a fast-growing field. And one of the most important things in technology is to make sure that you're always learning, you're always learning new things, and you're always motivated to collaborate with other people. And that's what I also really liked about her class because she would always have us work independently on assignments or with other people. And she's also been really inspiring as like a woman in computer science. And she's inspired me and encouraged me to apply to many different opportunities, like the Aspirations Award and lots of other things that led to many opportunities in computer science. So without her, I probably would have never like even grown the kind of interest I have now in computer science. And so I really appreciate her for guiding me and showing me what I really loved.
Allison Scholl.
I'd like to invite Ms. Lassner and Mrs. Minnick up. I have repressed many of my memories from seventh grade. I try hard not to remember most of middle school in general. However, I can never forget Mrs. Lassner. I remember always being excited to go to her life science class, wondering what else I could learn about the world around me. Not only did she make science interesting, she also made it fun. I fondly remember one day in class that we were learning about body systems. Mrs. Lassner had brought in some tonsils suspended in yellow liquid in a vial in order to show us what they looked like. We were all fascinated, but that fascination quickly turned into horror when we saw her unscrew the cap, tip her head back, and take a sip. She ate the tonsils. As we all screamed and decided that she was in fact crazy. Mrs. Lassner explained that they were only raisins and some juice. I didn't believe her. I still don't. Another time, she excitedly announced that we would be getting a new class pet. Although that class pet ended up being some yeast, which was technically alive, she argued, it was still an exciting addition to the class. I learned so much from her about life and why it's so amazing that we all get to live it. I always had a million questions in her class and she always was very happy to answer them. And although the mitochondria, the powerhouse of the cell, is very important, I think that the most important thing Mrs. Lassner taught me about was curiosity. And then in high school, I was fortunate enough to have Mrs. Minnick as my biology and human genetics teacher. She encouraged me to continue the curiosity that Mrs. Lassner had sparked. And she was just as enthusiastic about my questions as I was. In biology, I asked at least 10 questions every day, much to the dismay of my very quiet classmates. But Mrs. Minnick answered them happily and most of her answers made me think of even more questions I could ask. more questions I could ask. Experiments were always my favorite part of class. In human genetics, we did an experiment in which we tested our own DNA for a certain gene. I never thought I'd be so excited to spit in a cup. In addition to teaching me about how life works, Mrs. Minnick has also helped me work to save lives as well. She helps my co-chair and I run the NHS blood drives, and I have learned so much about leadership and persistence from her. So thank you for that. The thing that Mrs. Lassner and Mrs. Minnick both have in common, besides their amazing sense of humor, is that they both inspired me to want to learn. I think that is the most important thing a teacher can do for a student, and is why I'm here today.
Hello, I would like to invite up Mrs. Light and Mrs. Grock. I must say, as they walk up here, it was difficult to choose these two teachers, because I've had so many great teachers over the years. In fact, a lot of them are in this room right now. So, to begin with Mrs. Light, she was my Vision 21 teacher in middle school. She has been an extremely positive force in my education. Mrs. Light's class, as I remembered, was filled with a strongly scented candle that I commented on every time I walked in. In her class, Mrs. Light drove me to push further in my education, whether it was encouraging me to join an essay contest, or providing me with more challenging opportunities. The significance that Mrs. Light has had in my education and life is immense. Over time, I grew to appreciate the extra challenge you gave to my daily schoolwork, and I grew to use to that distinct scent of your candle in your room. Her impact has stretched beyond the classroom. As a deeply compassionate person, Mrs. Light has also been extremely supportive to me through tough challenges I have faced in my middle school and high school years. Looking back on my experience with her, I recognize the importance of going above and beyond, and taking advantage of opportunities to learn from my teachers, both in the subject area and in life overall. And Mrs. Grock, she was my teacher in AP Chemistry and Organic Chemistry, meaning I had her for every single day of my junior year. It's a good thing I liked her. I appreciated many things about Mrs. Grock. She is deeply devoted to her students and helping them learn. Obviously, like most teachers, she wants them to succeed in her class, grade-wise, but, which is difficult when you choose to teach AP Chemistry. But more importantly, Mrs. Grock wants her students to do well, because she truly cares about them, and about retaining the information as well as learning it. I often remember her talking about how students forgot something like 70% of the information they copied down during a lecture, so she often encouraged us to stay after school for help if we didn't understand a topic, and she fostered a classroom environment where group discussion added another dimension to our learning community. I also appreciated Mrs. Grock for putting up with my dry humor antics. For example, for example, she weighed in on a friendly disagreement a group of my, a group of friends and I were having, over how many millimeters could fit in an arbitrarily-sized graduated cylinder she had drawn on the board, which for the record was one or two and not 20. I also recalled a funny email exchange we had earlier this year. She emailed a group of chemistry students from last year about college letters of recommendation, and she closed with the line, "Remember, chemists have all the solutions." And I chose to reply to her, and I asked her if she was making bad chemistry jokes because all the good ones are gone. Equally horrible, that's the one she sent me. So I thought those two examples were exemplary of the fun interactions we had in class, which I appreciated throughout the year. At the end of the year, I asked her if there were any more classes I could take with her, and she said, unless you wanted to go back and take ChemX again, that wouldn't work out. Oh, well. Thank you for being such a wonderful teacher.
Mrs. Dobizinski was my third grade teacher, and like Jeffrey said, many of the specific details of content and things like that are gone from elementary school. But what I do remember is the way that people made me feel, and emotions, and things like that. And Mrs. Dobizinski cared about every one of her students, and she, she made sure that every one of them was doing well, and she was interested in all of them. And one example of just the little things she did was at Kimberly Lane, we had this thing called pencil grams, and basically you could just mail a pencil to someone in the school. It was kind of dumb. But every year after I had her, Mrs. Dobizinski would send me a pencil gram, and it, it really made me happy, and it taught me that little things like that can really make someone feel appreciated and feel happy. And not only that, but in so many other ways, she was a fantastic role model for the type of person that I would like to be. She was so caring and compassionate, it was just amazing. Thank you, Mrs. Dobizinski. Mr. Veeth I had for Philosophy and Literature. And one of the many great books that we read in Philosophy and Literature, the author described a concept called the real university. And in this passage, he critiqued the way education has become so credentialed, and students are pursuing grades and material success, and they don't really care about the intrinsic value of their education. But in the real university, the author said, the goal is pursuing wisdom, finding the truth. And I think that Mr. Veeth's classroom has closely approached the real classroom as you could like legally have in a public school. All of the students were really motivated to learn, because they actually wanted to learn the material. Every day I'd get to class, excited to see what would be on the board for the schedule, what we were going to learn. And what really stood out to me was not just Mr. Veeth's like teaching style, but the environment he created of so many students from like diverse backgrounds, students who normally wouldn't be very good students, are very active in class, but who were so engaged in what they were doing, that it was probably the best classroom atmosphere I've been in as far as students go. And it was, it was all because of him. He taught me so many great things, and I was just inspired by the love he had for his work and what he did. Thank you, Mr. Veeth.
I would like to recognize Mr. Weifels and Mrs. Dorsey. So Mrs. Dorsey was my fourth grade teacher, and she was one of the most caring and inspiring teachers. She was always enthusiastic to teach our class, and every day we learned something new and interesting. To us, she was not only a teacher, but also a friend. She also had a unique way of making learning fun. I remember one project we did called Country in a Box, where we had to research a country and create a cardboard box about that country. And that was one of my favorite projects. I also don't remember a single time she got angry at me, even when I made a mistake. She would tell me how to improve. She not only taught me knowledge, but also how to be a better person. So, thank you, Mrs. Dorsey. Mr. Weifels was my AP Calculus, AB and BC teacher in ninth grade. He was funny, dedicated, and nice. When I entered his class, I knew it was going to be harder, and I was prepared for a challenge. But through his exceptional teaching and the problems that he left us, I was able to master the content and improve my math skills for even harder math classes that I would take in the future. He was also always there to help his students. Every day, he was available after school if we had questions, and he always made sure we were doing our best work possible. As a freshman, as the only freshman in the class, I also didn't know anyone, and Mr. Weifels made me enjoy the class and look forward to learning math every single day. Thank you, Mr. Weifels.
My name is Mina, and today I would like to honor Ms. Ringate and Ms. McIntyre. So while the two of them are making their way up today, I would just like to say this again, I know this has already been said, but it has been really, really, really hard for me to choose just two teachers. In fact, I would argue it's harder than qualifying for a national merit. But because I can only choose two, I am very, very happy to honor Ms. McIntyre and Ms. Ringate today. So Ms. Ringate was my second grade teacher, and for those of you who know me, if you think I'm quiet now, like, I don't even know what you would have thought of me back then, because I was like a block of wood, like, I just didn't talk ever. So it would have been really easy for Ms. Ringate to focus on the louder kids in class, the funnier kids in class, the outgoing kids in class, but that wasn't what she did. She took special care of me, she really did. Partly it was because she knew I was having a hard time in class, because I was such a shy student, but partly it was also because she's just such a genuinely caring and kind person and teacher. She always made sure to approach me individually, ask me how my weekend was going, and check on how I was doing, both academically and socially. And at the end of the second grade year, I remember she came up to me and she told me, "Mina, make sure you come back, don't forget me, and come visit me again." So, poor Ms. Ringate didn't know what she just did to herself with that sentence, because from the first day of third grade to the last day of fifth grade, I literally visited her every single morning. And you have to remember, I was also super socially awkward, so I wasn't always talking when I was with her. Sometimes I just stood there and kind of tried to get words out. Even when I was talking, I was really quiet, so she probably couldn't even hear me half the time. So it would have been really easy for her to just ignore me, or to just kind of brush me off, but that wasn't what she did. No matter how much I stuttered, no matter how much I struggled to get the words out, she always took 10, 20 minutes out of her busy, busy morning, just to make me feel really special, and to encourage me to speak up more in class. And honestly, that was what I needed at that time. I needed a role model in school who I could look up to, someone who I could talk comfortably with, yet someone who also gently pushed me to get my voice out there. Ms. Ringate was exactly that role model. She really helped me to find my voice and to get myself out there, and I'm still so grateful to her. So, thank you, Ms. Ringate. Now, if you fast forward about nine or 10 years, I'm still a pretty quiet student, as some of you probably know. But one way you can definitely make me talk is by what I call pushing my geek button. So this is if you start talking about something that I can totally geek out about. And I know a bunch of you are probably thinking I'm like a total dork or a total nerd for that. And that was what I used to think too, until I met Ms. McIntyre, who is just about the coolest geek you can ever find. So I had Ms. McIntyre for AP US History, or APUSH, 11th grade. And for those of you who haven't been lucky enough to have Ms. McIntyre for a class, you've missed out on some of the most grin-inducing, giggle-invoking geek sessions that have ever taken place on this planet, especially about the Cold War, of all things. Her love for history, her little sarcastic comments on how our textbook really loves to go off on tangents, and her excitement to share tidbits about American history with her students every day, really just cannot be matched. I could actually feel my love for social studies growing every single second I was sitting in her classroom, just because of how much fun I was having learning from her. Although I loved social sciences before her class, of course, just the two terms I spent learning with her were enough to convince me that I do want to pursue a career related to the social sciences in the future. Ms. McIntyre has also been super supportive of that goal. She's always recommending to me enriching opportunities like Girl State or Senate Youth, encouraging discussions of current events, and recommending books to read, websites to visit, videos to watch. Even after I was no longer in her class, she always made really special efforts to engage me in intriguing conversations. Like, when I came back from studying in Korea, we had a great conversation about Korean reunification and national adoption, diplomacy. Every conversation with her is always so inspirational, and she inspires me to unabashedly geek out over history, to pay attention to and question the state of the world, and to become someone who can speak as passionately and eloquently as she can. Thank you so much, Ms. McIntyre.
Okay, so I'd like to, I'd like to invite Mr. Kipling and Mr. Kristofferson up here. Okay, so I'd like to thank Mr. Kipling for his continuous support of me throughout my elementary school career. Mr. Kipling is a kind, caring person who has been dedicated to assisting all students on the path to success, myself included. As an elementary schooler, I was a troublesome kid, and I was always getting into trouble. So, I spent a little more time in Mr. Kipling's office than most of my peers. However, despite all my problems, Mr. Kipling never lost faith in me, and his continuous support has helped make me a better person. Like, like a normal principal, every time I got into trouble, he, like, he could just simply just reprimand me and be, and get, get over with it. But Mr. Kipling was different. Mr. Kipling, he tried to educate me on my mistakes, and he helped me grow to be a better person. And then, thanks to Mr. Kipling's continuous support, he has, he has helped give, give myself some extra confidence. So, thank you, Mr. Kipling. I'd also like to thank Mr. Kristofferson. So, for most of high school, I was not the star diligent student that a lot of people here, a lot of the kids here were today. I slacked off pretty heavily, and I was frequently missing assignments and not paying attention in a lot of classes. I remember one time in AP Statistics, it was actually for Ms. McIntyre's class, I actually, I, I forgot to do, I forgot to do, like, make a prop for a project, so I actually brought it in, and I used Mr. Kristofferson's coffee maker to stain it, to finish it off. So, however, like, in Mr. Kristofferson's AP Statistics class, that kind of attitude didn't really fly. So, like, my grades suffered pretty heavily in AP Statistics, I'm gonna be pretty honest. However, Mr. Kristofferson, like Mr. Kipling, he, he saw my potential. Mr. Kristofferson helped me recognize my problems, and he's helped guide me to the path of becoming a more successful student, no matter how much I tried his patience. Because of his confidence in me and his support, I've since become a much more responsible and successful student. And, and as, as, as any of my teachers can now attest, now I stand before you a year later, and I'm a changed person, and I'm also a national merit semifinalist, and a national AP scholar too. And I don't think any of it would have been possible if it weren't for Mr. Kristofferson's support and his guidance.
Well, if we could collectively give another round of applause for all those honored I don't know if I can speak for all the adults in the room or not, but I'm deeply humbled by our students and the teachers that are being recognized here tonight. And truly, we're in the midst of greatness here and that's in the form of wonderful work by our teachers over many years and the hard work of our students and great parenting and, and all those things that have to come together to make all of this work. And not only am I in awe, and I'm sure others are as well, about the intellect of this group, but the wit and charm that we heard tonight is certainly an added bonus and, and something that is going to serve all of you very well because, as we all know, it takes that combination of intellect and those qualitative skills of, of keeping perspective and having that wit and humor and being able to show appreciation and respect and, and being responsive to the environment around you. So, it's just an incredible night and a, a great reminder about how fortunate we are to get to work with students like you and for us to have teachers like this in, in our community. And although tonight was about recognizing teachers and students showing appreciation for their teachers and all the work that they've done with them over the years, it's also a night to remember that for the students, don't ever underestimate how important you are to your teachers and how proud they are of you today, not only today, but in all of your future endeavors, all of your career moves and opportunities that you're going to have. They'll be interested in, in tracking you for many years forward and I can attest to that in a recent experience I had last week where I had a chance to connect up with a science student of mine who I had, I hate to admit it, but 30 years ago, somebody that I had for 8th grade Earth Science and 10th grade Biology when I was in my teaching career and she's now an MD in Surgeon. And something that makes us very proud and you will go on to do great things and make wonderful contributions. And for being here tonight and recognizing teachers who may have had, you know, an opportunity to plant a seed to your great success in the future, it's just a wonderful thing to honor that. And don't forget about them. Let them know what you're doing and how you're progressing because they will love to hear from you and, and will always be very proud about all of your accomplishments. So, with that, I'll turn it over to my boss, Bella, who can close the event tonight. But again, I just really want to thank you for being here tonight and, and students, keep up the great work. We're really proud of you.
Well, thank you Superintendent Anderson. On behalf of the Wayzata School Board, my board colleagues, I want to congratulate all of you students for doing just an incredible job, sharing your really personal stories with us tonight. I thought it was, I thought it was great to hear what inspired you and what motivated you, not just in the classroom, but outside the classroom. So, thank you for sharing all of that and congratulations. To our teachers, I also want to extend our congratulations and thanks to you for all of the hard work and dedication that you show every day for not just these students who've done very, very well, but for all of our students. So, thank you, thank you very much. And finally, to all the parents and families out there, obviously, your students probably couldn't have come this far without your love and support. So, on behalf of the board, thank you all very much for the role, the critical role that you've played along the way. So, with that, we'll do one more round of applause. Any other comments from my board colleagues at all? All right. One more round of applause. All right, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye, so move.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.